Five twenty-two, I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting.
Can you hear Mary?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you see me?
I can see.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so the first thing of the agenda is to update on the landscaping at Christian Lane, the Coke property.
Alright, Sarah, do I have the ability to share my screen?
That I will. You do now.
Okay, and it looks to me like Skip Provost is here. I can see you, I see your name, you're muted, you're welcome, thanks for joining us tonight. It looks like I now have screen share ability, okay. Um, so where I think we are is, I see that Jeff Kokat is here on the meeting, which is great. Jeff, you can, can we hear you? See?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So there were two landscaping related issues we've been dealing with. One was a relocation of the evergreen tree, this was discussed at our last meeting. There is a decision that there would be some work between the meetings to decide where the evergreen would get relocated to. Next amp, and ultimately that was sorted out, and then we were going to officially document that in a letter. And so I'm just gonna share my screen, I don't know, Jeff, if this letter was shared with you. One second. Okay, so I think you're seeing a letter, I think everyone should be seeing a letter. That starts with on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, is that right?
Right.
Okay, alright, so we drafted this letter, Sarah looked at it, Tom looked at it, they both made the, I did the site visit, seemed consistent, I think the feedback was that this was, this letter addressed, properly addressed, or said what we wanted to say. Jeff, I wanna give you a chance, if you haven't seen this letter, I just wanna give you a chance to look at the text, and tell me whether this is consistent with what you were looking for.
Yeah, I haven't seen this, but yeah, I'm reviewing it now, yes.
I think we've kept it short and sweet.
Yes.
So, so Skip Provost is here, I've alerted him that we're gonna be talking about this. So seems reasonable to ask Skip if he has any concerns about this letter, and then we'll decide if we'll just basically formally sign it and send it. Skip? Skip, we're not hearing you, and you appear to be.
I don't have, I don't have any concerns about the letter, I'm just curious if this will serve as.
We are really having trouble hearing you.
I stopped my video.
Can you hear me? Think we can hear you now, try again.
Okay, I don't have any concerns about the letter, I would like to know if this will serve as an amendment to the initial decision requesting the plantings.
I wouldn't think so, I'm not sure what you mean by an amendment.
To the, the original planning board site approval.
Oh, I see.
That included the requirements for planting the trees.
Was the site of that tree in the approved plan on the wrong side of the property line? Oops, sorry.
It was where it was shown on the original plan, it was right on the property line, and that's where it was originally planted and replaced after it was cut down, so this would be.
In that case, it would be an amendment, I would think.
So do we need any formal documentation of that?
Well, he said, I think this is the documentation, and we should vote it, I think what we need to do is vote it as an amendment to the, to the approved conditions.
Okay. Alright.
And I will so move.
Okay, so why don't you, just for Mary's benefit, just clarify, make the full motion, articulate the full motion, please.
I move that this letter be attached to the conditions for the approval of the site plan at one thirty-four Christian Lane. Amending, amending the as-built landscape plan.
And I'll second that. Do you get that motion, Mary?
Almost, I'm still going.
So it'll be.
Excuse me, it's, it's the approval of the, the as-built plan.
Mm-hmm, as-built landscape plan.
Landscape plan, okay.
And so this letter will be your, you know, your receipt, so to speak, your documentation, plus what's in the minutes, okay?
If we send it to them.
Yeah, assuming we vote it, and we will, are there any other comments on this letter?
Right. Any other comments from anybody else besides board members? You will take a vote? Sarah?
I'm muted, Sarah.
Sarah said aye, Don aye, Brett?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we'll, I'll attach Don's signature and send this letter via email immediately following tonight's meeting. Okay, so that's this letter. Then we had some, we had some broader concerns, as did the landowner. So I'm going to share a different draft letter. This is not necessarily, I've incorporated various changes, but we had other concerns about landscape screening at the site at one thirty-four Christian Lane. Sarah and Tom did a site walk, reported back, and so this is a revised draft of the letter. I believe that Skip Provost can update us on what may already have been done, so I would recommend we give Skip the floor, and then we discuss whether we need to wanna revise this letter, send this letter, et cetera. Yes, I replied to the email this morning after reading through the letter that Brandt sent, and I was out at the site and inspected the site on the twenty-seventh of May, and did notice that there were ten trees on the western side of the property that were looking fairly unhealthy, and some of them looked as though they had died. So at that point, I contacted our landscape, the gentleman that handled the tree plantings for us, for the tree that was cut down, knowing that we were going to be moving the tree at some point upon the decision from the board. He ordered the trees, and he has them in stock. And once we have come up with a date with Jeff to go out and plant the evergreen tree, we will replace those unhealthy trees that are on the west side of the array. We had also replaced a couple of the arborvitae's when the tree out at the edge of the street was replaced. So we are working on making sure that we are addressing the trees on, when they do the plantings, I'll also have his horticulturist accompany them, and any necessary pruning and check on the health of the rest of the shrubs that are out there. Weed whacking has also been done a couple of times to clean up around all the shrubs, and is scheduled to be done again this week. Okay. So how does that sound to people? So really, two questions, how does that sound, comments, and is sending this letter or a version of this letter necessary at this point?
I think it's a good documentation of the issues, if, is there a date on it?
I have attached, we can, right now I put the date of today on the, on the letter.
Well, it sounds as though nothing has quite yet been addressed. It's in the process, but this is a documentation of the procedure, I don't see any harm in sending it, and it will, he will be able to say that he's a fix things very quickly, I would think.
I have a question that's a bit tangential to this, but is there anything in the ground underneath the panels? When Tom and I did the walk in early April, it almost looked like bare ground.
It had been recently reseeded with a pollinator mix, because that site is part of the UMass Amherst Pollinator Program. So that, I think in the fall, they read, the, the group that oversees the pollinator projects determined that there wasn't enough of the pollinator plants growing. So they tilled the soil and seeded it and left it for the winter so that it would regrow in the springtime.
That's good to know, we have some
Our.
Pretty severe wind issues here.
Yeah.
And it needs the ground.
Civil engineering team was out over, the civil engineering head, department head was out last week, I believe, and she reported to me that it was in need of being cut. So I'm fairly certain that it's all fully revegetated, and we'll cut it in accordance with the pollinator program.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other comments? So I think what I'm hearing is that, like the first letter, I'll attach Don's signature and send this along to Mr. Provost as, for the record.
Have a copy, Mary.
Yes, of course. Okay.
Okay, well, I think the actions we've done don't really call for a motion, so I think we're okay with leaving it as is.
Thanks, Skip, for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and reach out to me when, anytime you have any concerns of any of the projects that we have in lately. Reach out directly, we usually try to rectify situations as quickly as possible. Very good to know, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, debriefing, the next is debriefing on the zoning comments. At ATM. So I presume that is mostly, well, Brett did all the talking, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I was suggesting that we just compare notes, there were the three of us, me, Judy, and well, and Tom was there, but did Tom send any comments to you, Judy?
Yes, he did, I will read them. He says, what I heard at the town meeting seemed to be versions of a larger theme we have been hearing for some time. Neighborhood slash abutters slash taxpayers' concerns about a given proposal that will affect real or perceived their quality of life, their property value, and the character of their neighborhood. We have heard these concerns regarding marijuana, solar, and state road rezoning trucking projects. These concerns were amplified in the recent town meeting. While this observation does not lend itself to a specific bylaw proposal, I am concerned that the planning board becomes perceived as pro this or pro that, where the citizen neighbor can't get a fair shake, emphasis on perceived. All it is only one data point, forty to nine vote to table state road rezoning, and lively marijuana discussion, maybe indications, maybe the indications, best town.
Yeah.
What Mike, on the marijuana discussions, is that most people were just really concerned about something they didn't understand, and I think that we ended the, the town meeting with not nearly as much concern for the marijuana occupational things that can be done as, as I don't really think that's as much of a problem at any, at this point.
Actually, I, I would totally disagree with that, my reading was that everyone was very concerned about anything to do with marijuana in a homeowner's occupation, home occupation, that they didn't trust the enforcement. If it was a delivery system, they felt that even though, in theory, a delivery system should not have any marijuana in the property, they didn't trust that to be well enforced. And I think, given our problems with enforcement, that might not be a bad assumption. And I got the sense that they just didn't think that that kind of an occupation had any business being, being part of homeowner's occupation, which is why I drafted the bylaw amendment I did. Also, as part of the discussion, Fred Baron on the select board at one point said, well, that doesn't, home occupation doesn't affect anything that's being voted on here. Planning board can go back and address that and bring a solution to us at a special town meeting, and I took that as a strong nudge to do same. So. But I think that's, that's slightly different than the, well, I don't know that it's different than the point Tom was making, but I think, I think the concerns were slightly. No, I'll, I'll block that back, never mind. My sense is that the general concern isn't with any specific bylaw, but with a, to use Tom's word, a perception that maybe the board isn't, is being too lenient with the, with the applicants. And I'm I'm afraid we've given them a perception that we're negotiating with the applicants, which I I'm not sure is true, but I think there's that perception, if you ask, is this okay with you? We shouldn't be doing that, we, we should be, we should be establishing a position in letting them tell us when they're not okay with something. But.
I just perceive that as being politeness, I mean.
Well, there is, but I, again, it is politeness. But I think the issue is perception.
Well.
I also think that the typical participant doesn't, typical abutter doesn't feel that he really, he or she really understands the rules. I think they feel a little bit intimidated by the engineers and the lawyers that the applicants have. And I noticed with the green jeans, and I think with one other application, as soon as they could comment on chat, the abutters were much more vocal than when they were speaking in person, it gave them a degree of comfort they didn't have otherwise, which is in one way nice, but another way disturbing, that they didn't feel comfortable commenting.
Well, I imagine that you know, we all heard some, some different things. I definitely heard a concern about enforcement. And so I resonate with the comments about that, that Tom made. I think Rich Kropchuski, who kind of led the, led the, led the charge, you might say, that got the rezoning motion table, and he's expressed this in, at our meetings before, just this concern about commercial activities in town, I think he's got my sense of, of Mr. Kropchuski, is he's got a very balanced, a fair and balanced view, that he understands what it means to be residing within the commercial district, but doesn't necessarily feel like it's, that the planning board, that there should be a free-for-all allowed with businesses allowed in that district, and the burdens that they may create in regards to traffic and elsewhere. So I'm not quite sure what to do about that, I think there is, you know, we've, I think one of the things that might have contributed to a perception about planning board leniency is the oft, you know, the, the common refrain that the planning board cannot deny these applications, we can only attach conditions to them. And I'm pretty sure that residents have come to these meetings advocating to the planning board, to us, that essentially we deny something. And and so what we've instead done is created, you know, we have in some sense negotiated by trying to place reasonable conditions on these site plan approvals that we believe reflect our best effort to protect residents, but aren't basically gratuitous ways of denying these applications without actually denying them. You could place such burdensome conditions on a site plan approval that it would make it all been impossible to really do, and really all that would do is invite lawsuits, which would not be good for the town and, and for the board. So, anyway, I don't know quite what to do about the enforcement, the home occupation thing is an interesting one, I'm not quite sure I heard what Judy heard. I think there is confusion around what, what are home occupations, and what can people do as home occupations? There is really no enforcement, you know, I think I heard Fred Orlovsky speak up to that very point, you know, I think his words work to the effect of, where's, you know, who's doing the enforcement? Who's checking in on these things, and the reality is that, as we all know, there is no proactive inspections, enforcement, or anything like that. So the bylaws are really only enforced when somebody reports a concern.
Well, that's the way it's been in town for as long as I've been here.
Yeah.
I don't know that there've been any problems.
Well, Rich brings his own problems on himself, he.
Well, no. Stick to the home occupation, let's, let's, the, the two issues, I think, are are different, the, the enforcement issue is much cleaner on a, on a commercial and industrial project project that has to go through a special permit and site plan review. There's a document, there's a beginning point, there's a, there's an, usually an occupancy permit, where we get into trouble or where things are difficult is if no building permit is pulled, because that's usually the trigger for the with the zoning officer, but, you know, when complaints are made, somebody sends something, some, the building inspector out.
I wonder if this is a trust issue, that I mean, trust in government and government institutions is, is rampant, and is there just a lack of trust that the town is adequately overseeing these bylaws and the marijuana facilities and so forth, and I don't know quite how more zoning bylaw changes can address trust, if trust is really the issue.
A lot of it, I think, has to do with the complexity of the issue, both the projects and the number of bylaws that people have been asked to look at lately, I know they've bothered us, and we spend a lot of time studying them. One thing that might be productive is to ask Rich to write down his thoughts on what could specifically could be improved. And another is to do some sort of survey on what other towns do for, have for bylaw regulations on either site plan review regulations, but I think more specifically bylaw regulations on commercial, and, and not sure we should limit things to commercial, because you I can't think of a reason you would want to look just at commercial without looking at it, commercial, industrial and industrial.
Yeah.
We might just start by asking Peggy Sloan, if, if she's ever done that kind of thing, a comparison. I know I have looked at a couple of other town site plan review, and ours is, ours is way more extensive. The number of things we can look at and question than say Deerfields, Deerfield's planning board has very little power. And maybe it's a matter of just educating people on some of those things.
Excuse me, but I, I'm sorry. I just was just gonna ask if somebody could give me Rich's last name for the minutes.
Kropchuski.
Kropchuski, okay.
Okay, I know I, within the, little over a year ago, my husband and I attended a Deerfield Planning Board meeting, and interestingly, their building inspector was there, so I know for me myself, I do feel out of touch with our enforcement. But we also, our building inspector enforcement is through the cog, it's not town.
They have their own.
Right. It's an extra level of difficulty.
There are good things and bad things about that, too, I know in Weston, the building inspector drives the planning board crazy, because he's always making determinations that they don't agree with, and but that's.
Yeah, Mike.
Yes, Don, in the respect to enforcement, I'm gonna go back a few years with the, with a farm brewery that became much more than what it was supposed to be, and that's the whole thing, what is the enforcement when that became more than what it was under the farm system and became And became more of a commercial venture to where the enforcement or the enforcement officer was like in that case.
That's an example of the building inspector. Not being where you thought he ought to be.
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing from an a butter point of view or a townsfolk anywhere is. That once things get rolling, where is the enforcement we can rely on? To make sure things are being done to the order of conditions that were set. And in a timely manner and not dragging on for years. When it should be, you know, within six months or, or one year and it's two and three down the road. What are the avenues of recourse that can be? Used to put it into compliance or to shut it down, so to speak.
Well, that's interesting because that's a different perspective. That's, that's not. That the bylaw or. The initial review process is a problem, it's that the. Ongoing implementation is and, um. Maybe that's something we, we should just specifically be addressing in site plan review. Why don't you put that down on paper and send us?
I don't wanna kill that many trees.
Ah, come on. You can write it in an email and send.
It could just be an email.
Okay, I'll have my, uh, my proofreader take care of it for me. So, no, that's just a thought from, from someone else, been outside of it for a while, but also. Has been involved many years ago for a profession into. Uh, working for either clients or towns when things have happened that needed to be addressed at a, at a higher level.
Yeah.
I think that's the same perception that. That leads to that same perception for that property that we accommodated the change of zoning for. On five and ten.
Yeah.
One other thing that occurs to me that a lot of these. Things that people are unhappy with have to do with noise. And noise at early hours and late hours. And that should be addressed by a general bylaw, not, not a zoning bylaw. I mean, you, you can condition operations. If in fact. It goes through site plan review, but there are circumstances when. Something doesn't necessarily go through site plan review. And it also affects things like construction, you know. Somebody starts. Well, around here, they started at six o'clock in the morning the other day with heavy equipment drilling a well and I. I wasn't too pleased about that. Happy to have the well drilled, but. So maybe that's something we should be thinking about, or, or talking to somebody about it. I don't know who. That's a process issue. I don't know how general bylaws necessarily get initiated.
I know Judy in some respects, some cities and towns that we had complete zoning for back. In my younger days, they did have noise ordinances that were separate from. Specific planning boards and as a subsection of, of town and city zonings of how many decibels between what? Hours and times and things of that nature.
Yeah, I think it's like a general operating. It's a general bylaw, like a dog leash. Requirements and things like that.
So I think this is a really, I, I think. This issue of noise is a really interesting one and, and I also wanna get to odor. But I think this, this case in point with green jeans is gonna be an interesting one. Cause I was also looking at the minutes of the. January twenty fifth meeting where we were having quite a discussion about green jeans and. The fans and the potential for fan noise. We, we won't yet, I mean, until the green jeans facility is really built and operating. We won't really know. Whether the fan noise is really going to be a problem. We know, all we know is that. There will be, fans will be running where before there were no fans running. And so we're, we get into the zone of. What do a butters consider to be like audible or a reasonable level of noise?
That possibly we could, uh, go down and take a look at what's going on in, on River Road because there's fans in those greenhouses.
And I will tell you, River Road was just in my mind on. More with respect to odor, but I think the, the fan noise is another good one. I know we had, I think, a big latent trust issue in this community. When it comes to marijuana odor. And we have approved a number of these facilities without really, you know, we've put in these. Requirements, but we have no actual experience with odor. And it seems like, if my memory is correct. Seven River Road should be cultivating this season. Is, and, and so it might be worth following up, first of all, checking in with them to see, is that really happening? And checking in with. The, a butter who was concerned about odor to find out, do they have? Any ongoing concerns and also maybe broaden that to fan noise. And I would be very hap- I would be happy, it's not that far from where I live to. Run down there and see what I can, uh, learn as just a.
I'll remind you that we asked the select board or the, whichever committee it is that's. Deciding to do with the community impact funds. That we would like them, some of them dedicated to hiring professional engineer to monitor odor. And I think that would be the place to go. I would be surprised if. The crop is far enough along yet to have any odor problems. But maybe.
Yeah, I don't know enough about.
Last I knew, none of the, none of the projects were active, at least as of town meeting. That's what Brian said.
I've certainly seen construction at the Seven River Road site.
I think he said there was no impact he's collected yet.
Right. But I recall them, a DMCTC saying that they intended to start cultivating at least indoors. In the spring. So, and I seem to also recall that the grow cycles were. On the order of. Six to eight weeks. I don't know where I'm getting that from, but. Shows you how little I know about marijuana cultivation.
Sarah is grinning.
No, I don't know either, but I just know that I have heard, I know hemp. Has been grew, mu- there's a lot of expe- much more experience with hemp and odors in the last couple of years. There is no regulation of odors from hemp. So many people have been like, wow, this stuff stinks. Depending on your point of view, where you are, there is definitely an odor from hemp that is not controllable. So I think many people are taking that experience from the last couple of years. And worried about that in terms of the marijuana effects.
Well, two years ago, maybe it was three at this point. The greenhouse at, at Christian Lane and Route Five did grow hemp and. Um, they got no complaints there.
It's more the open field hemp, I don't know.
It was.
Was open field.
Yeah.
It was five acres of open field, Sarah.
Yeah. Oh. Must not be how the wind blew.
Yeah.
Cause I know my husband will comment on it, um, Melnick, not, Melnicks aren't growing any this year. But Melnick from the last couple of years, along ninety-one, it was. Certain times, it was very noticeable.
I'm, I'm not sure that I. You know, run to the select board to say, go ahead and hire an engineer, let's start monitoring odor all over the place. I think I'd like to start, at least with Seven River Road, to find, get an update on where, where they are with their project. If they're growing and if the, uh. And depending on that, the, that status, find out from the butter. If they have any ongoing concerns.
Well, I'd just like to remind them that we feel, we'd like the authority to do that and have somebody investigate who a good professional might be because. And I also thought that we could combine with other towns. Because there's enough. You know, that collectively, we could maybe put somebody on retainer. But at the rate things are going, we may never have a project.
Well, Brett, why don't you and I, uh, try to make a visit that sometime this week or next?
I think that's a great idea. Uh, let's plan sometime next week and I will, I will, I think I still have the contact email address. Um, for them, so I'll reach out to them by email and see what we can set up for a visit.
Right.
I think a very good measure of. A way to feel we're more involved in the community is reaching out to the butters to get their feedback specifically also. I think that will go a long way towards our perception.
Yeah. And these are things that we could also document, you know, if we do the, take these actions, if there is a trust issue. Um, if we can document the actions that we've taken and the outcomes. Um, that could, that could help. Alright, so maybe we should, I don't know if there's anything more, we can probably talk all night long. About town meeting. I, I just found it funny how. That we spent, I think it was forty-five minutes at town meeting approving twenty-three. I think it was, or twenty-two warrant articles in rapid succession with almost no questions where. Large amounts of money were being spent and then we spent the next hour and fifteen minutes. On just the three planning board articles.
Yeah, and half of that time was about something that wasn't involved with any of those articles. Which is the homeowner occupation. So I really do think it doesn't need to be tonight, but I do think we should. Spend some time thinking about changing that, cause I. I think the town's perception of what a home occupation is, is. Is much more restrictive than the bylaw.
So I'll come back to a point you made earlier, Judy. I really do like the idea of, I feel like. We're navigating this area in a little bit of a, in a, in a fog. When I went to vote at our recent election, I happened to talk to Donna Wiley, who apparently was there. And she recognized me from town meeting and said something like, yeah, and everything was going fine until. You made this offhand comment about home occupations. And I asked her a little bit more and she seemed to say, oh, just everyone got confused about. What home occupations are and what's allowed and, and it. I didn't get the sense from her that people. Were, oh, now they're afraid of marijuana as a home occupation. So I just like to gather more information that's.
I can remember all this bit about enforcement, which was clearly related to, to fear.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it was with delivery, which. In theory shouldn't be a matter where. Where, um. It mattered, but they, they. They didn't trust the enforcement mechanism and they didn't trust the applicant. Like, maybe that's, that's part of it. But I think it comes, you know, I think it's broader than just marijuana. I don't think. I don't think they'd like. A distillery. Or. A firearms dealer. Make your own cigarette dealer.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there are a whole range of. Adult toys. I mean, you know, there are a lot of things that are restricted that you wouldn't. Want your kids. Getting too close to, and I think it's just that kind of thing. It's not just marijuana. And I think it just never occurred to anybody that that would be part of. A home occupation. Until we started talking about marijuana.
Yeah.
But there's no reason somebody couldn't be a, um, specialty gun dealer, I don't think. That could be a good home occupation.
And, and if we. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm with. I guess what I says, once you start going there. Suddenly I can imagine the weighty planning board becoming nationalized. And ending up on certain networks for banning.
No, 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 I think, I think you're just, uh. I, I would say that you can't do. Products or services that are restricted to license and restricted to adult use only or something like that. I mean, it's fairly. You would need a more precise wording than that.
So maybe we should close on the town meeting. Cause I know, and, and we should decide with our remaining time, do we wanna talk about Judy's proposed amendment? Do we wanna? Just get some minutes out of the way.
Why don't, let's put, leave the amendment till the next meeting and I'll try and reach out to Peggy Sloan or somebody and see if I can get a better. Definition. She's the one who got me thinking about this because. She said, that's just not. The type of business, marijuana, she talked about marijuana, it's just not the type of business that this provision was intended for. And it was very clear to her and I think that must be the way all the other towns interpreted, so. I will, I'll see if there are other towns that have some specific things. Or if she can help with wording.
Okay. And, and I'll just again say that I have this general sense that right now, when I look at the home. Occupation section of the bylaw, it seems. Fine to me and I, I have all of these similar enforcement questions, like there's all kinds of things that we can. Start to ban, but it starts to mean that we're. Basically asking people to snitch on other people about what's going on within their homes. And that, I'm just worried about the slippery slope effect. I mean, yes, maybe I, I don't like. I don't like firearms and somebody else doesn't like sex toys and somebody else doesn't like pornography, what? Kind of community, you know, right now we seem to be at a time where everybody wants to ban everything and. I understand the instinct. But if we don't have meaningful enforcement and we don't want a regime where. Home occupations now need to register with the town and be subjected to annual inspections, which I'm not sure we wanna go there. It's, you know, throwing in more clauses that just basically. Tell people who they can snitch on about things. I don't know, I, I, I'm not saying no.
A lot of, there are a lot of towns that require any business in town to register with. Town hall.
I agree, but we don't. We don't.
Maybe that's, maybe that's your.
So maybe that's us, maybe that's.
That's a, that's a way to get enforcement without. Without snooping.
So that I think really would push the button on the issue, like if we're saying, if we believe. That, say, a majority of waitly residents are concerned about. Home occupations. Then we'd have to ask, well now, if we place this burden on home occupations. And what's that gonna require and are we gonna hear from their? What, what might we hear from people who do run home occupations about, uh, a new requirement?
Limit it, no, I think there's a valid reason to do that entirely independent of any. Issue with home occupations. I think that's very important. I have at least five times in various committees and. Civic things tried to find lists of businesses in Waitley. And they don't exist.
Yeah.
It's also probably helpful to the assessors to have a feeling for. What businesses are and how they change and if, if property turns over. Cause they don't have records of it. I mean, there are a lot of reasons you would do this.
Um, actually.
I doubt that most, you know, I don't think the city of Lexington imposes this requirement because. imposes this requirement because they're worried about their home occupation by law.
Judy, actually, the two hundred and fifty committee did get all of the, the businesses in Waitly, because we went out and solicited them for.
Yeah, and I provided the list that I compiled myself as part of it.
Yeah.
I know. And I don't think it's complete.
Well, it's pretty complete, though.
Well. Well, I mean, I had the list of home occupations, but if there wasn't one.
All right. Well, I think I smell a dead horse, so why don't we go on to approval of minutes? I was out all day and I checked mail when I got in at five thirty and I see that we've got at least a couple emails. I haven't had a chance to look at those. Is, is that what we've got? Just two right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Judy, have you gone through and done edits on those?
Yeah, Brandon and I both have and his. I would say that all of the edits follow, fall in the cleanup category. There aren't any real substantive meaning changes, I don't think. Would you agree, Brad?
I would agree, like
There, there.
Significant change was the address of Green Jeans in the January fourth minutes.
Yeah. I I think Brad's additions to the housing committee commentary added some substance that I'm not sure happened at the meeting, but it's very, it's very educational. So, I mean, it's, it's it's good stuff. No, I think it's a I, I would say that minutes were unbalanced excellent and I don't think either of us found anything substantive.
So I think I would move to, so right now we're just well, I, I think given the fact that Judy and I have both gone over these minutes, depending on how Sarah and Dawn feel, you're willing to trust, trust us on these.
I've read them.
Okay. Oh, you have. Great. So we have three sets of eyes on this. So maybe we can just vote to.
He hasn't said whether she agrees with our comments.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it's cleaning up. There are some Bri- Brent did explain some things that weren't just a more general thing, the chapter forty B and the percentage of our housing. I mean, those weren't things that were specifically listed at the meeting, but those are good general information of how this impacts generally. And a lot of people, I think, the general public does not understand forty B. Yeah.
I think I, yeah, I remember just yeah, cutting and pasting a couple of yeah. So I'm torn. I, I don't think it's harmful to leave it in. I think.
No, there's no problem leaving it in. I, I think you made us look much more erudite.
Very.
All right. Well, then I'll offer that.
If, if you've got three of us who think we're okay, then we have a quorum anyway and Don can just not vote.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of January four, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Is that as, as amended?
As amended.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Any further comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. Uh, Don abstained, Sarah.
I approve.
Judy.
Bye.
Bye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we can, so Sarah, you also look at the January twenty fifth minutes as amended? Because it would be good to get us as caught up as we can.
Yes, I went through those also.
I'll just look at again what I
Come on.
That was about accessory apartments, Mr. Gleason. Yeah. And I'm just taking another look at it and it seemed like there was no I mean, the most significant change that I made was the bit about what we did at that meeting regarding the change to the large scale solar by law was very incomplete and it wasn't clear what we actually did at the meeting. So I added a fair amount of text to just clarify that we had a that we had a request for a zoning by law change, said what it, what it involved and that we agreed to schedule a public hearing. So everything else I think is straightforward. And Mary said she found the information she was looking for.
I realized I just had to go to the agenda. It's almost on the website.
Okay, we have a motion?
I move, we accept the minutes as amended, minutes of January twenty fifth as amended.
Okay.
Any further comments? Now we'll take a vote. Don will abstain. Sarah?
Hi.
Judy?
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes.
Okay. All right.
And I think we beat most of the additional items death as well.
Yeah. Okay, so I will, so just to review some actions. I'm going to complete the two letters to NEXAM. So Don, I'll paste in your signature on the previous letter. Make it official. And I will turn it into a PDF document, put it in OneDrive, send it to NEXAM CC Mary and I should CC that town clerk, correct? Because it should be added to the record.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll do that for both of the letters and then I'll reach out to I'm blanking, I apologize, but I'm blanking on the name of the person at Seven River Road, but I'll reach out to him about having a stop by to just find out a little bit more about how things are going and um, what's going on in terms of odor and noise and so forth. And maybe try to set up a, a time for you and me, Don, to visit next week. And then maybe while we're there, we can knock on the next door neighbor's door and see if anyone's home.
Okay.
All right, sounds great.
Is anyone going to ask Rich Karpieski for?
Yeah, how do we reach? Yeah, does anyone have his contact information?
Well, I'm good at email. If, if you ever want anybody's address, you go to the assessor's map and look where they send the tax bills.
Right, right. So it sounds like an email. So like Judy, would you like to either you could just simply email Rich directly or you could send me texts and I could email him from the planning board account.
Why don't you? Oh, he'd be very impressed to get it from the planning board account, I think.
Okay.
What are we, what are we addressing over this?
So this was a, we were going to send a communication to Rich Karpieski.
Karpieski.
Karpieski. Thanking him for the comments that he made at annual town meeting that the planning board seeks his input and would like to better understand his concerns about enforcement of zoning bylaws or other related concerns.
No, I would play it as changes he thinks would be appropriate. Or kinds of changes he's looking for, just I wouldn't go to enforcement, I'd just leave it more general and let him let him define it.
Okay. Happy to do that. But I'll need you, Judy, to send me his email address.
And Michael's going to email us a nudge to keep a condition on timing of implementation of site plan conditions, aren't you?
Okay, Judy, I will. And I just want to thank you folks for listening and I'll be signing off now.
Okay.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Hey, Gretchen.
All right. So can I make a motion to adjourn?
That's always in order.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.